Board of Selectmen, East Haddon, Connecticut, for August 7, 2019. If you get up and... By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. And I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
And any discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have some minutes from July 17. And have you had a chance to take a look at those?
Yeah.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 17, 2019, as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Okay. We have a item here, project number not applicable. Here we go. Disruption news. And Connecticut Department of Transportation is announcing a metal pipe replacement project, State Service Road 434, Mount Pernasus Road, which will require road closure and detour. The road closure in detail for this project is scheduled to begin Tuesday, August 13 through Wednesday, August 14 of 2019. And it will be closed. It's between Boge Lane and Shanigan, pretty much over towards Boge. The state route for getting around that is to go all the way down Hop Yard Road to 82, and then come back up 82 and vice versa. You can either use Shanigan and Boge, which will get you around it, or you can use Smith to Alger and then down Colchester Turnpike. So people who are local or know how to do it, it's a little bit quicker. That is going to happen on the 13th and the 14th. And then on the 19th through the 22nd, there will be paving. It's going to go from Town Farm Road all the way to Route 82. And it's a fairly good chunk. The road won't be closed. You'll be able to get through on it. But there'll probably be considerable delays in that. So just so people are aware, and that's what we've got. And moving on to the first selectmen's report. A memorandum from KERMA. And the KERMA Board of Directors and staff. Thank the town of East Haddon. East Haddon Board of Ed, for your continued membership in KERMA. Loyalty and the collective risk management efforts for our members are a sustaining force behind KERMA's outstanding financial strength, growth in service programs, and our ability to deliver value-added products and services, such as members' equity distribution program. Pleased to present your members' equity distribution check of $24,311. Since KERMA began its members' equity distribution program in 2011, the town of East Haddon, East Haddon Board of Ed, have received a total of $98,944 in distributed members' equity. KERMA stands as one of the most successful statewide collaborative efforts between Connecticut municipalities, schools, and local public agencies. As a member-owned and governed organization, our mission is to help our members build stronger, better communities to live, work, and learn in. We look forward to our continued partnership. Please visit kermadot.org to learn more about our certain new services, upcoming education programs, special events. And it's worth noting that Board of Ed is going to get 51% of that. The town of East Haddon, 49%. Somewhere here, there was a... Okay, that was in what I read there. The $98,944 total that we've gotten back through this program. So it's pretty impressive. FEMA. Rob, you had asked for a little bit of an update on FEMA. And I'm going to ask Beth to offer some insight. Not necessarily numbers, but what we're doing, what the schedule looks like, how we're moving forward.
We've been continually working. We've submitted paperwork to FEMA for our forced account labor and equipment usage from the original storm on 9/25/2018 to July 18. They had everything up to date. Our total equipment that we used, as according to their usage rate, is $115,780. Our labor is $146,000. And then the materials or contractors we've used is $181,000. So far, we've submitted for reimbursement for close to $550,000. 100% completed projects are the Robbie Road culvert, the lumberyard, catch basin, and drainage. There was a drainage pipe on moteland and catch basin that was removed. And then as far as gravel roads, we completely reconstructed Parker Road, Sims Road, and Valhalla 1. Our next planned road to reconstruct is BB Road. So that will start either the end of next week or the following week. And we continue to do smaller drainage type repairs that were damaged as we can fit those in. That we have. So we'll work continually on this as far into the winter as we can using our inside labor. And then at that point, we'll have to reevaluate and see what we need to contract out because everything has to be complete by June of 2020.
Thank you. Rob, any questions?
I know there's some concerns by the folks down on the Hemlock Valley. Any indication when that might get reopened?
We're still evaluating that. I need to get an engineer to give us some solutions on that. We went out to bid for the Neptune Avenue Engineering Services and Hemlock and Bonfroy will follow shortly.
But those have to be completed by June of 2022 also?
Correct. Neptune will be a little difficult to get that completed. So I am setting up a meeting with Dana Conover to file preliminary paperwork to file for an extension.
So Hemlock has not even started. They haven't started anything. We don't even have anything, I don't know. And did... So who determined to close that road?
I did. With the guard?
We haven't had any engineers out there to look at it to see if we really needed to close it or if there's any...
It's... We've been focused on Neptune, trying to get that going. And now we're going to move forward in this. Can't do it all at once.
No, I understand that. I just want to know. And again, I mean, I haven't driven down it because it's closed, but whether it needs to be closed and if there's a way to work around it.
It's that pitch goes right down into the brook, very abruptly there, with a little bridge across to the home on the other side. You know where I'm speaking of?
I don't. Sorry.
It was a slope failure. The entire slope was saturated. So basically, the guardrail was suspended without any support.
Okay.
So...
And badly undermined and no indication of exactly what... And the vision of an oil truck coming across that and winding up in the brook with the oil and the Connecticut River was scary.
Okay. So what is the timeline to hiring an engineer to get out there and look at it and see what we have to do for repairs? Because it's been how long now? Last October, November?
September.
September. We're almost on a year it's been closed.
We have to put it out for a request for qualifications.
And...
So that should be done.
And then what's the next step after that? Like, how long does that stay open? What's the process?
That only has to stay open for three weeks. And we would interview and award it.
So when will the RFP go out?
Probably end of June.
Are you going to try and do Bonfroy at the same time?
We have a consultant looking at it right now to give us a proposal because they don't think that's as involved. And it might come in under our bidding ordinance so that engineering can be done without going through the process.
So will there be any issues getting, other than Neptune, getting everything done within the timeframe we have to get it done? 2020?
There might be. We might have to contract out. So we're seeing what we can do with our own labor, reconstructing gravel roads. If come this winter, we know we won't be able to at that point, we'll start preparing bids and have it done first thing in the spring and complete.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number of things I wanted to comment on. I was going to say BB is going to be graded and will be completely rebuilt, but Beth already commented on that and starting right away here. Buckstown Road is now open. We're finishing it up. I'm not sure that the contractor is going to make an awful lot on this one for a number of problems, but at least it's open now. The SRO, we're down to a short list of one. We had four applicants. Three did not qualify. There are some examinations and testing still to be done. And we should be interviewing on the 15th and moving forward with that.
Who's interviewing?
Resident trooper, Jeff Rose, and myself. And once the SRO... Or not, I shouldn't say the SRO. Once the additional officer is on board, we'll be seeking volunteers from amongst the police that we have. And then we're going into that second interview process that's there.
And who's doing the second interview?
It has not been determined yet.
You're going to determine that?
I'm not even sure at this point.
I don't remember what I...
Certainly, I don't recall what the process was. I suspect with the superintendent, myself, and the state trooper, resident trooper, but that's speculation on my part.
And I think I...
I'll have to look at what the specs are.
From our committee, I think we talked about having more of a committee for both interview processes just because it's a member of the committee, whether it's an SRO or a police officer. We can talk about that further. Did we get the memorandum yet from the Board of Ed? They were supposed to send it to me. Memorandum of understanding from the Board of Ed for the board, the town, state troopers.
I have not seen that. Have we got that?
We haven't got it, I don't think. It was supposed to come to me.
You had that on February 6, but it wasn't...
Oh, that one?
That old one.
Right. The old one? We have not gotten an updated one?
No.
Nothing beyond that one.
So you're saying there's only one qualified person?
One qualified person out of the list.
I understand there were two, but another person didn't show up from what I talked to someone today. And they didn't show up at the testing today. The other person.
That is what I've heard.
Just on the BB Road thing, did we... Did the dust control come out of the budget again this year? Or is it in the budget still? Okay. I know we've not used dust control in a long... A couple of years, which was fine, but it's really getting bad.
Probably fine right now.
Right now is probably good. It's not very good.
We don't have much mud control, though. Okay on that?
Well, you say, will there be dust control applied in the future if it's necessary? I think that's maybe where you were going.
Well, I think it's probably going to be done after, though.
We won't do it prior to reconstructing the road. We'll apply it to the road system.
There we go. Company one. The parking lot is going to be paved and start either late in the 13th or early on the 14th. And the trucks that are located there right now in the building are going to be relocated. What's usually done is out to members' homes, wherever they can find space for them. And that way, they're available for use. They won't be blocked in by whatever's happening in terms of paving. You've got to have them out where you can get at them. And it's anticipated that the job will be completed by the 16th. So they're going to have the company one fully repaved by then.
By the 16th.
We had approved the idea of having an event at the Disc Golf, an awards event at Nichols Field. And there was discussion that they could have beer if they got their permits and insurance in place. To date, we have seen nothing. And that is on the 10th. This coming Saturday is the event. We may well see permits. We may see insurance in place. If we do, then they'll be allowed to do that. Lacking that, there's not going to be any liquor served or any beer or anything served. There is, for the ceremony, the awards ceremony, which is being handled by the National Disc Golf Association. They do have their insurance in place, and that event will take place. It's a question of whether or not beer or wine or anything is served at it. And to date, we haven't got anything that would make that possible. And at a meeting with Chatham Healthcare, this is just kind of a... To be aware of it, we use Everbridge very, very extensively. We get it through Chatham Health at no cost to us, part of our package. State of Connecticut has always contributed a certain amount of funding to Chatham, and Everbridge has come out of that funding. They've made it clear now that any sort of emergency service like that cannot come from that funding. In the future, Chatham would have to take that out of their general budget. We are far and away the most active user of it. Portland, to some extent, uses it, and most of the other towns use it very little. They're discussing right now going to another vendor, VEOCI, as a change as of next July. So this is well into the future for us. But our Board of Ed very, very heavily uses the Eversource. We use it here considerably. Or Everbridge, rather, I'm sorry. And not Eversource, although we all use Eversource. The cost to Chatham right now is $7,088 per year for the Everbridge service that they offer. If they were to not use it any longer, we would either have to transfer and go over to the new one, or we'd have to pay for it ourselves. And I'm not sure what portion of that $7,088 would fall to us, but I'm guessing a good chunk of it. But just something to be aware of, that this is pending ahead on the road. And I think that about sums it up for what I've got. That said, we move forward to citizens' concerns. Any comments or concerns? My goodness. Nothing. Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on to unfinished business, then. The East Haddon Village Revitalization Committee update. If you look in your package, you should have a letter describing what's taken place. And we have one applicant, one vendor that's moved on. We're putting together the RFP right now. And what can I say about that? I did meet with Jeff Riley and his wife, Mary Wilson, regarding the timeline. And you can see at the bottom, a timeline that we developed at that point that works for them, seems to work for the town. It takes into consideration the fact that we have an election going on, and we will be doing a budget in the spring. And this should give them the opportunity to do what they need to do. At the moment, it's being reviewed. We've got our lawyer's comments in there. We've got the timeline built into the RFP. You've got a copy of that available as well. And it's been returned to the revitalization committee. And they're going to be looking at that. I don't know if they're going to have a special meeting or wait until the 28th when they have the next meeting. The anticipated date for turning that over to the applicant is the 19th of September. Any thoughts, comments? Moving on from that. Transfer station. Things are pretty stable up there right now. Got a picture in there you can look at. That's a display that was put up, trying to instruct people in terms of recycling, what's in, what's out. They can take flyers from it. Good response, from what I can see, to that. So the people are actually learning a great deal. And when you talk to people that are looking at stuff, they're amazed by some of the things they hadn't realized. As simple as washing out the containers before they throw them into recyclables. And we've got that one thing that has been proposed that I think is a pretty good idea. Right now, everything that goes into the upper portion of it, the bulky waste and the metal in the back, has to go over the scale and come back out over the scale. That's wear and tear. It's confusion sometimes in terms of getting people in and out. And very often, the loads that are going in don't need to be going up there. The problem was the people were blowing through. And Public Works has recommended that we put a gate on that. A gate is controlled from within the scale house. That's fully manned now. And people can pull up if they've got brush, or not brush, but metals or items that you don't have to pay for. You can just pass them through, open the gate, and let them go. People who don't need to be weighed coming out again can be passed through without going over the scale again. In terms of efficiency, in terms of, you know, wear and tear on the equipment, it makes sense. And with someone there manning it all the time, it serves as a good block. Beth, any comments on that? You know what I said?
No, it's just people... The cones that we have set and the lighting, people drive right over the cones. They don't feel the need to stop.
Not so much as they used to, from what I understand.
No, but now they're blowing over the scale even when you're in the scale house. So there's still that perception that if you have things, you don't have to pay.
We're going to stop that.
Challenging. So the gate, I think, would just stop anyone from... They can make or just continue.
Cost is about $9,000. And we're going to be broaching that with the Board of Finance on the 12th. I didn't want to do that without running it by you guys first.
What are you suggesting? They get that money?
In part, we're collecting quite a bit more now from what's going up and back. So we've got more income coming from our bulky waste area. That may be enough to offset it.
So will that be the... I mean, I see, I'm assuming this picture is the education board that will up or whatever. Will that be at least one thing that we put in place from the recommendations? Or was that even a recommendation from that committee?
The gate, you mean?
The gate. John will be in that.
The gate.
I'd have to go back. It's been so long. What exactly the recommendations are on that committee?
Because I'm just looking at our notes here.
I don't agree. I think education may have been a piece of it, but...
Their recommendation was to gain control of what was going up and back and being paid for what was going back there. The methodology, you know, you come up with the methods that work. And a lot of the methods they had don't work. The recommendations on us hauling our own trash on close examination made no sense. This... We're accomplishing the goals they've set. We are getting paid for what's going up and back, and we can account for it now. We are gaining control of what's going on into the hopper and into the recycling. Those are the recommendations they had. Are we doing precisely what they said? No, not always. But we are looking for the same goals. And sometimes, we're finding better ways of doing it.
And I'm just asking because the note here said "Board needs to work on recommendations of the transfer station today." To determine which ones to implement and how they... So I'm just wondering what... So what we've done so far and what we have left to do?
We'd have to go back and look at their recommendations and give you a list of what's happened. I can tell you that one of the things was getting rid of people who don't belong there. We are enforcing the sticker system now. We had one in place already. We just weren't using it.
Yeah, no.
And we are enforcing it. And I get up there and talk to the guys, and we're seeing indications on Facebook that it is being enforced. Comments say, yeah, they really are checking. And getting control of the bulky waste and being paid for what's going up back there, accounting for it. We are doing that now.
On that subject, do you have any estimate or figures as to how much more we're generating in fees?
I would have to ask Beth on that. I don't have those numbers in hand.
Don't have dollar figures, but I will say that we were... Prior to manning the scale house full-time, we were only collecting about 30% of the bulky waste. Close of a world mandate. And now, our collection is closer to 60%. So we've doubled.
And the balance is pretty well accounted for with evictions, with, believe it or not, water. And trying to come up with a good method of covering those, keep the water out, is an important item that we're working on.
Does that result?
We have to come up with some kind of cover system to cover the...
Keep the water out.
That won't be done in this budget here. It'll be in the...
But you know, a sofa in there that gets soaked and wet has tremendous weight. Sheet rock that gets wet picks up a lot of weight.
Do we have a committee that works on it? I mean, what do we have that is, like, working to get?
There's no committee at this.
Not at this point. Because we've got the recommendations, and we're trying to pursue it as best we can. Okay, moving on. Citation hearings. We haven't done anything with that. Control of animals is still holding. We're candidly have a date scheduled to the 5th. We may have to change that for that hearing. We'll get into that a little bit later in tonight's meeting. Cemetery committee, we haven't moved on that one. Planet Conservation and Development. You've got a copy of that with you tonight. Hot off the press. The way it stands right now, apparently there are a few items that have to be added to it. Couple of ways of going forward with it. Can approve the draft plan. And it's mistated right now, by the way. Was dated the 7th. Now the one I've got is dated the 6th. Okay, that's all right now. And we need to move it forward to a town meeting for approval. Sorry, had a public hearing. And we want to move it forward to a town meeting for approval of legislative body. So we can wait and let those last few changes be made, which will probably happen on the 13th. There are items that Jimmy Ventress had that he wasn't able to get into it before he left on vacation. Be back on the 13th. We're going to be having a special meeting on the 13th or the 14th, and I'm going to wind up recommending the 14th. And we could approve that and move it forward at that time, if you want a chance to look it over.
And do we have a list of whatever the...
I don't have a list. The revision's not yet made. And apparently they're trifling, but there are a few of them. And I can't identify them for you.
Okay, so you're saying that the revisions are going to be made next week?
Yeah.
And then we're going to get it back? And then we have to vote on it?
And then we can, what I'm going to ask for, you've got a copy of it, and I'm going to ask for a list of the revisions, so you can very quickly look them over, that we can move forward at that time. And a special meeting probably late in the day, 5:00 or 6:00 p.m.
I'm not available after 5:00, so I would have to be done by 4:00.
So we could have a meeting at 4:00, or we got to be done by 4:00?
Actually, I'm not available.
On the 14th?
Anytime after 3:00, I'm not available.
Rob, are you available?
I can do the...
I don't have my calendar ready, so what day of the week is that?
I believe that's Tuesday.
Today, obviously.
Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Wednesday, the 14th.
Wednesday, the 14th.
Noon and 3:00, noon and 2:30.
Noon and 2:30. It gets shorter and shorter.
Yep.
You know what? If we had a 1 o'clock meeting, would that work for you, Rob? Okay. I'll get a whip out and see to it's done. Ready to go.
One comment here in our, what is this we're looking at? The almost final, final, final?
The groom has done it. And apparently...
Can you read the email from Mike Suwak?
Yeah.
If you read that, it's, "While Jim's changes..."
Okay.
"...that you had already previously discussed with him, and all the things you went through have all been put into this document."
No.
It says, "Please note that there are a few items that Jim still needs to get information clarification on. However, it is substantially complete for this election." So all those changes, and Jim's not back until the 13th. So he'll finalize that on the 13th.
So one of the things that I, we brought up was that, looking at pages 80 through, 81 through 90, whatever, 98. It's a reiteration of the documents earlier in this, pages in this document. And anyone trying to use this, they find it very difficult. At least several of us have felt that where we're going and goals, so let's pick 71 or 70, talks about where we're going and the goals. And then it says how we'll get there, recommended strategies. So if you're reading this, you're going, you're looking at the recommended strategies, and you're going, "Who's going to do this?" That's not really clear. But you have to go another 20 pages, and then there's, how we're going to get there has, is all listed again as a strategy, and then who's going to be doing it? So it seems to me that these should be consolidated, but I see a hand.
I asked you about that. I said, because I knew you had asked about consolidating the charts.
Yeah.
And Jim said they weren't going to be doing that. So that could be something to bring up on the 13th, if you'd like.
On the 13th, why, there's a 13th, and there's a meeting of the P.
Jim comes back from vacation on the 13th. So that's his day to finalize this, so you can vote on it on the 14th.
Okay.
For clarification, did they have a reason they're not going to do it, or they just...
He just said that, he said, he didn't believe in zoning, wanted to do that. But please reach out to him on the 13th and get it from the horse's mouth.
I will, thank you. I would just, after looking at this and now these issues, I find it a very difficult document to work with.
Okay, I just got that at 2:15 this afternoon, so.
Is there a reason we have to have a meeting on the 14th?
Because of where the timelines come together.
I have to advertise the town meeting.
Yeah.
So I have enough posting requirement time. I didn't, I didn't want to have it on the 13th because that doesn't give Jim any time to work on it on the 13th. And your only other absolute drop dead option would be first thing Friday morning.
Not Thursday, though.
I don't know what your schedule looks like Thursday. I won't be here.
Yeah, you won't be here. But I think we'd be better off if you were around. You've got the numbers, all the dates.
Yeah, so I have to have the posting to the newspaper before noon time on Friday in order, that I have to have the call to them in order for it to print on the 22nd and to hold the town meeting on the 22nd. So if you prefer to do Friday morning?
Can you just make note that you send my emails to my work email address right now because my town one isn't working?
Sure.
So what are we settling on? That 12 to 2:30? So 1 o'clock on 14th? Okay.
I was just going to say, I'm, who is making the decision not to do that? Yeah, I'm sorry, you weren't clear?
You know, I don't, I don't have that information. I just knew you, I happened to be in the office when you were asking about it.
Yeah, yeah.
When Jim said they're going to send a final copy when he's on vacation this week, and Nancy would give it to me for board of selectmen. And I said to him, "Will it combine those charts that Rob was asking about?" And he said, "No." So please confer with him.
I will.
Okay. Transfer station waste agreement. This is a very interesting. There is a revised agreement in front of you now, not the one that you saw at the last meeting. And basically, what happened, the original agreements for bulky waste, transportation, and municipal solid waste go back to probably 2005. Over time, with delays in terms of renewing them, and they were just simply being renewed by memorandum that referenced the first one over and over again, the dates crept out. None of us who are currently including willomatic waste realize that this creep had taken place. And as it worked out, the renewal dates for the municipal solid waste, the bulky waste and the hauling were now October 1st, not the June figure that we were thinking in terms of. Curiously enough, the recycling is actually out in February, the end of February. Our current contract expires, and March 1st of 2020 is the first day of the new contract for the recyclables. So what's actually going to happen is we're going to continue to be paid for our recyclables through the end of February, which is nice. That's a fairly substantial amount of money for us. What they have done is to revise the contract and combine what were originally four separate contracts that were being renewed over and over. They've been combined into a single contract now. And if you look towards the end of it, you'll find a billing schedule, page 11. And if you look down and find the recycling, which I believe is the third group there, you'll find an effective date of March 1st, 2020. So the balance of the items on this new contract take effect October 1st, 2019. But because of the separate contract on the recycling, which actually goes longer, they built that delay into it. The expiration date for this entire contract will be five years hence on the October 1st date. So we're going to get everything into the same cycle, into the same contract. Little confusing, but there it is. So please look at that. I don't think we want to vote on that tonight, review it, see what's going on with it. One of the questions you had, Rob, concern going out and talking to the state about recycling and, you know, how that's looking in the future, what we can anticipate and what's possible. And I reached out to Chris Nelson, who I've contacted before, very knowledgeable. He's, what is his title? Supervising Environmental Analyst, Sustainable Materials and Management. Quite a title. But we talked at some length about what had happened. The market's collapsing basis is with China with their national sword policy. And he commented that one of the things that probably has taken place actually is China's generating enough recyclable materials so they don't need ours. And that's part of what's going on. He said that right now, there are investments going on all over the country to restart factories here in the United States that will process materials, recycle materials, to a large extent financed by the Chinese, coming in here and taking advantage of that. Kind of strikes me as a little like Europe post-World War II, as we moved in and took over so much. They're looking to recycle paper, plastic, glass, metals, water, and pretty well handled, so that's not a big deal. They're looking at about a two to three year before these operations will actually start functioning well. And so that's down there, and given that we're looking at a five-year contract, that causes you to hesitate a little bit about just what it might do. His comment says there is an upturn looming. Big question is when? And then when he talked about the $30 a ton, he said, "You know, that's a far better number than most are seeing." And if you look at the town of East Haddon, our Public Works report on this, you've got four operations who pretty much represent what we might be involved with. Calamari, Dainty, Mira, and Willomatic Waste. One of the interesting things is you find that single stream recycling, Calamari doesn't take it, Mira doesn't take it, Dainty wants $56 a ton to process it, Willie's talking $30 a ton, slightly over half that. When you start looking at the other numbers that go along with it, you find Calamari at $95 a ton for bulky. They won't take the MSW, municipal solid waste. Find Dainty willing to take the municipal solid waste at 100, Mira at 83, Willomatic is at 75. And none of these offer discounts or anything down the road. Bulky waste, Calamari's 95, Dainty's 125, and Willie is 75. And in terms of hauling, Calamari is looking at 175 a trip, Dainty's looking at 295, and Willie is looking at 165. Every category and every need, Willie comes in well ahead of anyone else. So something to think about. We went on to talk a little bit more about that. You know, his comment of $30 a ton being a pretty good price, pretty fair. Okay, and I said, "Well, what does the future hold? Where are we going with this?"
That was really my question.
He said he sees and he expects that we're going to find a flat processing fee down the road. Won't matter whether it's recyclable or not. That what he's anticipating is it's going to be kind of a fixed cost, some variables tuned to generate a reasonable profit to the processor. But he just sees it as becoming a flat processing fee with no real distinctions within it. That's kind of surprised me.
And that's for recycling we're talking about now?
No, we're speaking about everything, across the board.
Saying everything.
Okay.
I guess the question, I think the question that Rob's asking, maybe, I don't understand. Why do we always sign a five-year contract with them?
Of late, we have.
Why don't we just sign a short contract?
Of late, it's been a five-year contract. That's what's being offered. Perhaps Beth can offer some insight into that.
I think if we shorten the contract, the rates...
Go up.
Go up. The longer the contract and our commitment to them, the better the rates.
And I found out when I talked to Mira that on a month-to-month or whatever, it was very expensive. If you've signed a long-term contract with them, rates came down considerably, which is about what you would expect. I mean, that's reasonable. So the five-year, I look at it and I'm going, depending on what happens three years out, maybe we'll find having a five-year contract is a benefit to us. Maybe it'll cost us a little more. It's a little hard to call. But it seems like it could go either way.
I mean, the current rates are much less than the rest of our options, so.
I, you know, I don't have any objection to their rates. The five-year kind of puts me off a little bit, too. I would have preferred something shorter. But it's not the end of the world either. Anyway, this is, we're not going to vote on this tonight. So take a look at it, think about it. And we'll be ready to move forward on the next, next board of selectmen's meeting. It was a whole different game all of a sudden from what we thought we were dealing with. New business, building department fees discussion. And you've got a, in a packet there. But really set this off, I think, to begin with was Mr. Benjamin Shaw's letter. And then there was a letter from the Economic Development Commission. And I asked Bill Thode to take a look at what we were doing and get his take on it, his evaluation. And he did that, spent quite a bit of time, reviewed other towns, made some corrections on stuff that we'd seen earlier. And he's here. And Bill, can you offer some insight into what we've got?
Yeah, the, for the most part, the fees that were instituted, I think in October of last year, are pretty much on the mark, especially in the commercial and... of last year are, are pretty much on the mark, especially in the commercial and technical aspects of buildings. But the new, we'll say new construction appeared to be a little on the high side. I would say more geared toward a town that was very affluent, like a shoreline town. The cost per, basically the cost per square foot was a little bit on the high side. So what is in the packet reflects a community that's more like the East Haddon. Could bring a little more into, we'll say, reality.
Both of the differences are on the backside of the draft sheet.
Yeah.
And when you look at the square footage costs, first floor and the additions, square footage costs, and then the, I guess the MSMEs, which was being used, that's something that's...
Although, yeah, that, 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 let's put it this way. The, these, the hundred, we'll say $150 per square foot cost is something that right now, the town of Guilford is looking into raising their rates to that. I would say that knowing who put most of this together, the town of Madison is also that. A billable lot in the town of Guilford, Madison runs anywhere from 140,000 to 180,000 dollars for a basic lot. You buy a lot, you have it for 45,000, 55,000. There's a big discrepancy in overall values. So that's, you know, just bringing it into using a town like, say, Durham as a comparison, their high side or default number for a square foot is about 98. That's what we try to look at is bringing in something. Yeah, these can be massaged, they can be massaged up or down. You know, our 25, 31,000 and 13, or 13, 26, 25, 26 are right in the ballpark with surrounding towns. So that part is very, that part's good. How we evaluate some of the construction is a little aggressive.
Questions or...
I guess, I guess I don't understand how this works, so...
Okay, we're not going to vote on this tonight.
Yeah, I know. But, so my question is, so this resident did this schedule for us?
What, what was that?
The resident, the resident who did the schedule for us, right? Did you look at this?
Yeah, that list is, is close. It's not, it's not, it's a good estimate. It's not an exact figure. Because there's all these little nuances that are, you know, different. But, and there's some towns that are more, then there's others that are less. But it gives you a fairly decent representation of what's out there.
So, so some of this is assumptions?
It's what?
Assumption, not...
No, no.
Or estimate, not...
They're, they're, they're a good, they're a good way to look at it. I wouldn't say they're cast in stone, but they're, you know, they're a pretty close estimate, pretty close estimate as to what other towns would be.
Maybe I could just set up some time to look at this more because I don't really understand.
It might be good...
How we charge building fees, so.
Might have to the office.
Exactly. Stop in and spend an hour with Bill. He's incredibly knowledgeable. And I can tell you this, the feedback that I'm getting over and over again about Bill and what he's doing here in town for us is absolutely remarkable, both on the commercial side and the residential side.
So how many complaints did we get about our fees? How many complaints have we gotten? Is it just this one guy or is it like...
You've got the second one from the Economic Development Commission and they're...
Well, that's kind of, I mean, that's also the chairs, you know, building stuff in town and stuff. I really kind of hesitate about...
I think that's not out of line to do, but I would suggest you sit down with Bill, talk to him and let him, let him show you what's going on.
Like I said, the numbers that we put on this are just comparison numbers. If you have to bring, you want a similar community in the state, you know, would be, you know, would be, would be big. So nothing's cast in stone, it's just going out to compare.
Right, but the one that, that the guy from town did, you know, showed that we charged him $4,900 or something like that. We charged her 4,900, 4,300. And the next closest town was 2,900. That seems like we're way, and, and most of them are, so everything else is, goes down to 1,400, so we're charging 4,300. So I just needed understanding of, are we grossly overcharging?
When you take it into consideration, the high number that we did, you know, that we did get was two percent of them. The low, the 26 or whatever was...
The low was 1,400, I think.
It should have been somewhere, normally would have been somewhere in the middle. That would have been our recommendation.
Somewhere in the middle of where...
1,400 and 4,300s?
Yeah, I mean, are we talking, exactly, are we talking 1,400 to 4,300 or somewhere above there? You have a bunch of them in the 2,800 range and then we are 1,500 higher.
Don't, don't lead a lot into that.
Well, well, that's...
So that's what we have to get more.
Yeah. Because I know your recommendations are not significantly different for a lot of this from, this is your draft, right? This is draft? Okay. So a lot of these are very, are...
We haven't changed, the only thing that we changed was, was basically, we'll say house buildings, because over here, everybody, most people get, they don't tend to build a lot of house buildings. They're, they're...
Yeah, here for you with us.
And number that I have in there would be, pretty much what you get it from, you know, a rebuilt type place. The 150, you know, per square foot cost of construction, it'd be very affluent towns that are building on the water and you're talking multi-million dollar structures. Yeah, that's, that's what it's going to cost us. That's not our market here. So that's all, that's all, just reflecting that.
So one of the things you talked about is general repairs. It says 2018 RSMEs. What's RSMEs?
That's a standardized...
Well, let's start with RS, besides my initial. What's RS?
I can go get the book.
What, what does RS mean? Oh, okay.
I don't.
Okay. All right, all right. So that's just a, that's a standard that you're using.
It's basically a standard in construction and it gives you everything on putting up drywall, insulation, nailing, siding.
Because that's what I thought, you know, that's what this was based on and you're using, I think, the same, same thing. So what, what I think we liked about the, in 20, the October 1st, 2018 thing was that recommendation, what we approved was that they removed a lot of the variables and put a standard in place so that it was very much, there was no, I'm going to do it for 500, but the real cost is really 5,000. I mean, it put standards in place so you had a basis that was the same for everyone.
And it does.
It does.
I agree. Okay. Now, you know, the thing is that, is that standard realistic for the area? That's something, you know, that's not for me to decide. But I'm just going by what, you know, what comparison towns, you know, anybody can say I can build a house for $200,000. When you look at the square footage, the, the town has to have some default number that brings everybody back to somewhat reality.
Absolutely.
Nobody's going to tell you exactly how much it costs to build their house.
No, that's why you have to, yeah, well, you, you have to have a standard to go by because...
But that way, the ways that the RSMEs at 150,000, $150 per square foot...
Right, okay.
Is, is up here. The average house in the town might be here. I can't make that decision.
So you would say after looking at one of these properties and it gets sold, a new house gets built, gets sold, you know, the square footage, it gets sold for instead of 200, it gets sold for 300, that would have an impact on the square foot cost and would give you a basis, more of a basis to what you would use for a figure here? Is that what, what you're, what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I mean, the market goes, the market's...
I know, the market goes up and down every week.
It changes all the time.
Right.
I'm just looking at, compared, comparing to other towns.
Okay.
Not necessarily, you know, exactly what it costs, but what's another town in roughly the same economic situation get for their permit.
Okay.
We want people to do, get their permits.
No, absolutely.
Permit's a one-shot deal. Accessory it is forever.
I'll chat any more about it.
Yes. Office is open.
Thank you, Bill. I don't have anything else for you if you want to get out of here. Now let's, sue, you're set?
Yeah, if anybody wants to discuss it, definitely come in. I can show you what...
Moving forward, East Haddon Free Public Library. Here we go. We're here for, by the way, for discussion only at this meeting. The, we've got the town attorney looking at the ordinance. There's a copy of that in your file. That's the ordinance by which our combined library system was created. And the question was, does that have to be altered in order to incorporate a second building into it? And there's virtually no mention of the East Haddon Free Public Library building in there. So he's reviewing that right now. We've got a copy of the stipulated judgment that came through and a copy of the lettered from Joan Maynard, the president of the East Haddon Free Public Library and Reading Room Association, looking to turn the building over to the town as a gift. We need to be moving forward on that. The understanding has always been that we would go to a public hearing on that and eventually go to town meeting for acceptance. And looking at it, probably September 5th would make a good public hearing. And if we could at the same night, we have to move it forward to the Board of Finance to be a gift, if we could all be there for that public hearing and vote to move it forward. Board of Finance meets on the 9th and then we could have a town meeting October 1st. And that's the schedule that seems to work best for what we're doing.
So when do you need us, where?
September 5th would be what we'd be talking about for a public hearing.
Is that what you're saying? You wanted us there?
Yeah, and it, the thing being to move it quickly and to try to get this wrapped up before the elections and everything. If we met at that same night, the Board of Finance meets on the 9th, we could move it to the Board of Finance and then they'd, you know, go forward from there. And the goal being an October 1st town meeting for it. I'm sorry, a October 1st town meeting.
So, September 5th? That's a Thursday? So why can't we just do it, are we meeting on the 4th anyways? I guess I'm confused what you need us to do. You said you needed us to vote on this.
No, no, we need a public hearing.
Oh, I thought you said that you wanted us all there.
And, and subsequent to the public hearing, then we have to move it forward.
Okay.
And so September 5th seemed like the best opportunity for a public hearing. Yeah, you're right. It's a second night, bing, bing, like that for us. Rob, any thoughts on that?
No, I didn't work with that.
You work with that, you work with that, Seth?
Yeah, we'll get a meeting request, right?
Get a post as a public hearing on the September 5th, then see if we can move it forward. Any issues with those dates?
Another option, if you chose, if you didn't want to do two nights in a row, you could change the time of your regular Board of Selectment meeting on the, at the 3rd?
Right.
While I look at calendar.
You brought that for a reason.
Oh, yeah. You know, you have a regular Board of Selectment meeting on the 4th. If you, I don't usually like to do this, but, but if you chose to maybe do a public hearing at 6:30 and then change the time of your regular selectance meeting, it would then make your regular selectance meeting a special meeting because chances are you're not going to start it by 7 o'clock. Then you could do it all in one night on the 4th. But you'd have to change your regular meeting to a special meeting. I just got to do it all before the Board of Finance meeting on the 9th, where you have to vote to send it to Board of Finance and to town meeting.
And they only meet once a month.
I need a vote after the public hearing, after you hear what the public has to say.
Right.
Okay.
So your, your, your choice on those two options.
I try to do it all the same night?
Yeah, why not?
Okay.
So we don't have to vote to send this to public hearing?
No.
You go ahead.
I'm, I'm just asking. I know there are people in the audience for this discussion, so I'm just wondering...
I had planned you to do it tonight. I had planned you to look at it, to talk about it, to ask your questions, to hash it out, because you still have a Board of Selectment meeting August 21st, which you can vote to send it to public hearing and I can still get it published in time on the 29th. I would send it to the papers on the 23rd, published on the 29th for a public hearing either on the 4th or the 5th. So a lot of this stuff is to give you time to review, ask your questions, get your answers and be ready to act on everything at the next meeting.
And we still make it to the 4th for that publication.
And we'll have the attorney's comments back by then on the August...
I would expect.
21st meeting?
Yeah.
Right, currently we don't have his comments back, correct?
Correct.
You still got it, you're still looking at it.
And are these facilities, quotes related to?
The, this is your basic to bring it up to snuff. This is what it's going to cost.
But all these things don't have to be done at once.
No, but we, we already own the Rathlin as East Haddon Free Library that we're looking at in terms of, but, you know, the overall cost is what we're looking at.
Perhaps we could ask Mr. Turner if he could comment on which of these things would have to be done immediately? I think we've already been talking about the boiler replacement, underground tank removal... I think we've already been talking about the boiler replacement, underground tank removal, correct?
Ron?
It's been discussed, but...
That would be the most...
Thank you.
So, let me just understand the thought process here. So, we have these thoughts on how much it's going to take. So, there's $315,000 worth of repairs that need to be done in order for us to take ownership of the library?
No, we can take ownership before.
We can take ownership, but these are things that then we have recommendations.
Those are pending needs.
So, are we, are you giving us these because there's a question as to whether we're going to take ownership? Well, I guess that's going to be up to town to vote or close up to public camera and then...
And people are certainly going to be asking for those numbers as we move forward. This is to give you a full picture of what we're looking at, where we're going.
I think it would also be helpful for the next meeting if we have the appraised values of the two buildings.
I don't know if anything like that exists at this point.
At least the town's praise, praise will then.
We can see what's on the cards. I have no idea.
I believe the Free Public, East Tatum Free Library is 500,000 plus. I looked at it a while back.
Also says we already own it, which we don't.
Who cares?
Well, for a long time, everybody thought we already owned it. And then on careful inspection, we found that we didn't. Okay. Any further questions on that? Just give you information, look it over, become familiar with it. Okay. And moving on, proposal award for the Neptune Avenue Bridge Design and Construction Administration Inspection Services. And you've got the recommendation from our Public Works Director in front of you right here. And I'll initiate this by making a motion to set the recommendation to Public Works Director and authorize her to finalize prices and negotiation with Wendell McDonald and Costello Incorporated for the Neptune Avenue Bridge Design and Construction Administration and Inspection Services. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
So, the first AL engineers have a price for Phase 1 and Phase 2. So, does Freeman, but, so Wengels, whatever, they, all of them say cost plus negotiation for Phase 2.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have an idea what the cost is?
That's, that's a question on negotiation. If you look at the fourth one that's...
Depends how we go about repairing it.
Yeah.
Right, so like, the first one, it's nine, Phase 2 is 95,000. The last one, the fourth one, is 32,000.
Yeah. I'm at the bottom there.
I'm just curious if we have an idea of both.
As far as construction, I mean, because what that price is, that's the inspection, construction inspection.
Okay.
Cost, that's not construction. Construction will fall around $30,000 maybe, depending on what option we go with. So, the engineer we will select will give us a couple of options with cost estimates and then we can make our determination on which way we go.
And this again is paid by, poured by FEMA and along them?
Three quarters of it.
Yeah, it's paid by FEMA and along them?
75%.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're going with Wango because their, their Phase 1 is the lowest, is that?
Well, we interviewed the three, three firms. Emmett, myself discussed it. Wendell McDonald is very familiar with our town. We've worked with them. They are ready to start immediately. They were the most confident that they could get done in the timeframe required. They have subcontractors very lined up and are ready to move on as soon as we can get the build up.
So, we had four, excuse me, six submissions and you just interviewed the three of them or the others?
Just interviewed three.
Okay. Based on their prices.
To some extent, the June deadline, getting this done, and we may well get an extension on this, who knows? But when we looked at others, they were farther out and left you uncertain about whether or not they would be able to complete the job.
So, this will be for design, correct?
Design and oversight.
Oversight, but not actual construction?
Not for construction.
Construction inspection though. They oversee...
Yes, the project.
Construction inspection.
Yeah.
And they prepare all the bidding documents for the construction and that's all part of the administration piece.
And Linda likes that.
How state does it? For the federal local program, for the state...
Makes sense, makes sense.
Do we have a first and a second already?
Yes.
Yeah.
Rob's second.
Myself and Rob. And any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That's done. Beth, I think that's all we have for you tonight, so we want you to get out of here.
So, you can just stay and enjoy your company.
We are going to move on. We're looking at a bid waiver for the Nathan Hale Ray High School varsity baseball field renovation. And there's a letter from Director of Operations, Ron Turner, describing what we're looking at. And we're going to make a motion to waive the bid process for the Nathan Hale Ray High School varsity baseball field renovation, authorize the Director of Operations, Ron Turner, to negotiate with Roger Sullivan of Sullivan Paving, per his quote of 35,600 for this project. Get a second on that?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
No, I was going to ask about the budget, but I see that we have $15 left after the estimate.
Ooh. Not sure that would take us out for ice creams either.
Well, I have to say that Sullivan, company Sullivan Paving is known for their excellent work, so, and I do know that a local resident right on Great Hillwood has donated a lot of time over the years.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Greetings. The Rathlin Library, here at 6:30 on Friday, August 16th. The library is seeking permission to serve beer and wine at this event. Program will be offered after hours and is expected to have an entirely adult audience. Can this request be discussed at the 8:07 Board of Selectmen's meeting? Thank you, from Michael Gilrod. And I'm going to make a motion to approve beer and wine service at the Rathlin Library for guest speaker event on August 16th, 2019. Get a second? Discussion?
Who's the speaker?
Mr. Lloyd Manstan, an author who wrote a book about World War I submarines, very interesting.
About what?
World War I submarines. Local author.
Nasty business those were.
You should come to the presentation, there'll be beer and wine, baby.
Wow, okay.
So, did you second that?
I did.
She's true, dude.
Okay.
Is he out of Westbrook, that area?
Oh, I think he's from that, actually.
Oh, really?
He's capable of that, you know, right?
Okay. Okay. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board, commission changes. Okay, I have a letter from Warren Bellows, Selectmen's Office, Town of East Tatum. I am currently serving my second term as Secretary of the Ethics Commission and with that term due to expire on June 30th, 2020. For Section 7, Paragraph 2 of the Code of Ethical Conduct Policy adopted by town meeting March 31st, 2008, all members shall be electors of the municipality. I'll be closing on the purchase of a home in Waterford, Connecticut on 7/1, 2019. I'll be moving into this home and selling my residence in East Tatum as soon as possible following the transaction. Will no longer be qualified to serve on the Ethics Commission. Please accept this letter with my resignation from the Ethics Commission effective July 1st, 2019. And I'm going to make a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Warren Bellows from the Ethics Commission. Can I get a second?
Second.
Rob, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have the minutes of the Town of East Tatum Ethics Commission from 6:26:19. And within that, under new business, Chairman Scott Jessick is up for reappointment. He has agreed to maintain his position for another term, subject to ratification by the Board of Selectmen. And a letter of resignation from Secretary Warren Bellows was read and accepted. So, have the ethics minutes confirming this. I'm going to make a motion to reappoint Scott Jessick for a three-year term as a member of the Ethics Commission with a term to expire June 30th, 2022. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. One thing to note here, with the passing of Lynn Branscombe and the resignation of Warren Bellows, two vacancies exist in this five-member commission. Being a member is a little bit more difficult than most other boards and commissions. Any sort of political involvement, being elected, being an employee of the town, makes it impossible to be a member. They're looking for people with no connections, and so that's a little bit more difficult.
So, that said, it's, well, I guess we don't use Scott Jessick as an attorney for our town.
No, we don't. No, we don't.
Okay.
And, you know, finding someone as members for that back when we created it was very difficult. And right now, we have three members active and it's a five-member commission, so we really do need some more, some more people, someone to step forward. Okay.
Being advertised in the paper?
Already been advertised in the paper, on the website, on the Facebook page.
Okay. And I am going to make a motion to award tax refunds, the amounts as presented, 2989 to Anne Kavanaugh, 2667 to Jason Peacock, $53.94 to Joanna Schaefer, $170.47 to VCF S Auto Leasing, and $226.54 to Dutch Oil Company Incorporated. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, once again, the public comment at this moment. Yes, sir, Bob?
The building inspector's recommendation, do you have the copies available of those?
There we go. I thought someone might want a copy or two.
Yeah, I'd like to see what there is.
Were you here when he did his presentation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this a good year?
Yeah, take one or two of those and name and all, select one, there they are. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Selectmen's discussion. The only item we had was that special Board of Selectmen's meeting for the 13th or the 14th. And I think we resolved that pretty well, didn't we? It's going to be 1:00 PM on the 14th. Any discussion on that or any...
No, you'll send a little meeting. Or you send an email or a meeting or something.
Yeah.
I will give you that.
And Sue, anything?
No, how's our trees coming?
Beth? We're working on them, I know that.
How are the trees?
We're working, there's more than we can handle at this point, so. FEMA work, our regular maintenance and the trees work overwhelmed the public works.
I see us.
We're trying to prioritize and give things...
I see us.
Have we hired, did we hire contractors? No.
Well, we have contractors, but they need staff to assist.
It's a, it's an enormous task that we've got here. A splunt is now doing some amount of prenascis. I see them kind of working out from Shagbar, southbound, eastbound, and then back towards the center of town.
Right, and I've constantly reached out to Eversource and now they have been working on the turnpike, taking out the trees. They'll be working on a few other roads in town.
Now, this, this is a project that's going to go on for a long time. No questions about it.
And there's trees that have died since they've, roads have been cleared, so...
Yeah. I mean, they cleared, I thought out, not Hungerford, Hemlock Valley Brook there when they did it on 82. And when you look at it, what is there, eight or 10 trees dead in there right now?
Well, we've cleared roads completely and being aggressive and go back now and there are additional trees, so...
This is ongoing and it's not going to be over easily. Rob, anything else? Okay, that said, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:28. And it's second by Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, good night.